The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the city of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about city of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office. Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. I'd like to call the city of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Tom Garde.
Here.
Alderman Ted Garde.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Eisenach.
Here.
Alderman Sevenek.
Here.
Alderman Hammond.
Here.
All are present.
The first item on the agenda this evening is the minutes and communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive minutes A through E and communications F through J.
So, motion and a second by Alderman Ted Garde. Is there any discussion? Alderman Garde?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate Luke Scheller for his appointment to Heckerod, taking Tracy's place.
Luke will be a great addition. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Director Hutter related to the COVID-19 update. Nothing about the numbers or anything, but could you just let everyone know about the two programs through the Department of Health Services, Wisconsin Department of Health Services, regarding free tests and free test kits and their free telehealth?
Is that what others do?
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, I can. So, the first program, as you mentioned, is for free COVID test kits. So, again, this is a program offered through Wisconsin Department of Health Services. You can go online to sayyescovidhometest.org to order 10 free tests per household each month. So, again, it's by household, not number of people, but you can do that every month, and they expanded the program last month to allow every household to receive 10 tests. The second program is for free virtual telehealth services. So, if you test positive for COVID-19, you can seek telehealth services through Wisconsin DHS. They'll connect you with a clinician who can, they can determine if you're eligible for antivirals, and they can prescribe it to you on the spot, too, if they deem that you're eligible for it. So, it's important that people start those treatments within five days of having symptoms. So, having access to a quick telehealth appointment is a really great resource that the state's offering. And do you know the website for the telehealth information? Yes, there is a website. If you go to Wisconsin DHS COVID-19 Telehealth, if you search that, and there is a phone number that people can call, and there's also a QR code right on the website that you can scan that can connect you to. Great. Thank you so much. It's important to know that those are free resources available for anyone in the community. Thank you. Correct.
Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, if we could, all those in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item F is public comments. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening?
I think you're going to have to hit it. There you go. All right. Perfect. Greenwood Court, Manassia. I'm here tonight speaking as a chairperson from the Park and Rec Department. Very passionate about our Parks and Recreation programs in the city of Manassia. That I am. And as you've all read in the minutes, I expressed my frustration at the Park Board meeting last time. And after thinking about it, I realized that those statements seem to be directed at the Common Council as a whole. And to the majority of the Common Council, I apologize for that. It was not the right thing to do. There are so many of you that I respect and have supported me through the years and supported the Park and Recreation Program. So, again, I'm sorry. However, I am still frustrated. I'm frustrated with the material and the proceedings that are running in the background. Emails from an alderman to all aldermen suggesting that we don't have it right even before that material and the Park Board and Park and Rec Board recommendation comes before you. During this past weekend, I was also reminded that the Park and Rec Board is only advisory. I get that, and I've understood it since I've been there. That doesn't mean we don't have a purpose. It doesn't mean that we don't do good work. We do our best. You know, it's very difficult to think that Park Board decisions and recommendations have real meaning while these counter recommendations are already being introduced via email to all other aldermen even before that recommendation hits this open floor. It's frustrating for me, and I vented about it. And I'm sorry that I vented the way that I did, but it doesn't change my frustration. I'm still frustrated with it truly. You know, Jack Fry on his desk at one time, I can't remember the exact words, but it was something like, you know, "Democracy is messy. Voices coming from everywhere. Everybody shouting. Everybody trying to do something." Something like that. And that's kind of the situation that we have there. Okay, enough on my frustrations. There are a couple of points that I do want to make with the decisions that you have before you tonight on Park and Rec Board recommendations. Number one is that the Park Board and Director invited Eric Schaefer of Fox Valley Athletics to the Park Board meeting and have had extended conversations. We have concluded that his services are of high quality and high value to the Park and Rec softball program. I also followed up with Eric regarding comments directed toward him and Fox Valley Athletics at the council meeting that he attended. But I think what they have to offer has value, and that's why we're recommending that proposal. The other thing that I'd like to address is it has been suggested that Manassia Park and Rec run the softball program in-house. It is further suggested that the Director, Megan, is qualified to run the program. I have no doubt that she's qualified. She's beyond qualified. However, the use of her time and talent for this purpose would be a great misdirection of that time and talent. There are many huge projects already requiring Megan's attention, such as the Jefferson Park Engineering, did preparation and analysis, the Lawson Canal Project, just to name a few. And I could go on. I was talking this afternoon about what are we looking at in the future? There's a lot of stuff out there. We have Hidden Pond to wrap up since all the streets are going in. That's going to require attention. Running a softball program on a day-to-day basis is not something that I would wish to hang on our Director. It just isn't. Thanks for your time. Thanks for listening.
Is there anyone else this evening?
Eli Wickman, 710th Street. I would like to reiterate a lot of those points, but I would also like to first bring up the Eric Schaefer situation with the softball league. If you notice that it is a three-year contract, if you look at the Jefferson Park Plan in total, those new softball diamonds should be done right around when that contract is wrapping up, when we'll have new diamonds, new amenities for people, and possibly a three-year head start of being able to run it on our own. As of now, probably couldn't do it on our own. Those things will line up when we can talk about new pricing structures. We can talk about comparing it to, I believe, in that email that was sent out, comparing it to Appleton, because right now, we can't compare to Appleton because we're trying to get new things. We're trying to replace the ones we have. We can't put apples and oranges together right now. They are two different levels of things. But I also want to talk about, we are an advisory board. That's what we do. We distill the information down for you, give our best judgment on what it is, and then present it to you to say yes or no. By the time any information, as I'm also on the board, any information comes to me, it's been researched for, at this point, I'm finding out, years, months, weeks, whatever the topic is, then it comes down to the board to discuss, and we discuss at length. Sometimes, we change that plan before it even gets to you. I saw the email. It was forwarded to all the rest of the Park Boards, and my first initial sassy thought might have been, so what? Because we've seen that information for months now. It's nothing new for us. We've discussed it at length. What I would encourage is those who are interested, come to the meetings. Watch us make those decisions. Discuss all of those points. Watch us talk about how the best usage of our resources, of our time, because otherwise, we're just treading the same tracks that we've already tread for months now. It's disrespectful to the department. It's disrespectful to the board. It's disrespectful to everyone in the room to have to hear about all of this over and over and over again, when it has kind of already been figured out and it's no new information. So, I ask that we kind of keep the decorum and the protocol up, and we, you know, kind of stick the landing on this one. That's all.
Hi there. Sandra DeBill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. Off-topic of what I had planned to talk about, but in response to the comments that were previously made, I do just want to reiterate that whether it's the Park Board or the Plan Commission or Sustainability Board, these are appointed positions. They're not elected positions. They're not accountable to the taxpayer, as you are. You make the final say, and you have to feed, get the feedback from your constituents. You are basing your opinion on what is best for your district and your constituents. And granted, 90% of the time, the council agrees with what is recommended, probably 99% of the time. It's that one occasion that there's a disagreement, or even the last few times, it's been tie vote. So, it isn't like an overwhelming disagreement. And to kind of, I can flip this whole scenario regarding what had transpired with the chickens situation. We had an alderman on television, weeks before it ever hit the agenda, proposing this ordinance and actually contemplating a tie vote that night. So, please don't start pointing fingers because they point right back at you. Okay, then, what I really wanted to speak about was, ironically, last week was the chickens. This week, it is the scooters that are on the agenda, which I'm not in favor of expanding or making permanent. So, I'm assuming the next council meeting will probably be normal may. As a taxpayer of the city of Manassia, as a resident of the city of Manassia, and I think the vast majority of people are really much more concerned that the council deal with important things. I mean, things that are affecting them, the vast majority of the day, like number one, when is the Racine Street Bridge opening? I jotted down a few things. That's the number one. Number two, things such as the Whiting Mill that burned down. We still do not own it, as far as I know, yet the city has invested a lot of money in raising the facility and securing the facility. What is the status of that building and what is going on? Are we going to recoup any of those funds, or is this just going to get washed out and we're going to try to make a tiff out of it? Another question is, the former Manassia Court Building that burnt down, like probably when I was born, that is still sitting there, and now we have new residential buildings being built that are going to be looking at that every day. Why has there never been a razor repair order listed? Why have we just let this go on for so long? Another thing is, of course, the steam plant. What is the remaining debt on that steam plant? And what is the status, if it's even around anymore? I think they're called Incredible Foods. They started a cranberry factory there. I haven't heard anything about it. So, I mean, these are things that are hitting our bottom line, that I think, come on, let's focus on some of the big stuff. Of course, people are concerned this time of year with potholes. There's probably not a road you can't drive down that you're going to hit something. And I know there's been work going on regarding the trail to High Cliff. When are we going to have a trail on 47? When are we going to work with Fox Crossing that someone is not killed on 47? And the same goes with Oneida Street. Actually, a trail was planned through the DOT and a roundabout, and that never came to fruition. And that should have all been in place before development occurred, that you don't have residents or property owners after the fact complaining that they don't want to put in. And then, lastly, of course, my biggest issue is code enforcement, and that goes back to the chicken coop situation. I have really no faith in code enforcement, and so I don't know how this is ever going to fly through. There are situations in my neighborhood that have been going on for years, documented, photographs taken, and nothing gets resolved. It's more, let's just be friendly with our neighbor. Well, sometimes, you got to hit them in the pocket. And speaking of that, what is their current debt at our joint municipal court? For years, we've been in a deficit because we don't issue citations, and we're not going to court. And NINA has been allocating money every year out of their budget to try to make it black again, but Manassia, we just keep running in the red. So, I could go on, but thank you very much.
Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to have items separated this evening? Alderman Sevenek?
I don't know how I lost everything here, but I got my agenda here. So, anyways, Mayor, same routine. Just like to, at this time, make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Common Council for 2623 and 22023.
Is there a second? Is a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please. Stan yours isn't working for some reason. No, vote for the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
There we go.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item, is there a motion for item two? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the revised food service and recreational licensing fee schedule to be effective April 1st, 2023, for the 2023-24 licensing year as recommended by the Administration Committee.
Is there a second?
A second.
So, motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Is there a motion for item three? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. Still trying to get back on. Here we are. So, thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the awarding of contract unit number CMC 09-22-00335 for Sanitary Sewer and Water Main Reconstruction in the amount of $784,578.
Is there a second? So, motion and a second by Alderman Schmidt. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Is there a motion for item four? Alderman Garde?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion for the memorandum of understanding with the Fox Valley Athletics for the year 2023 through 2025.
So, motion and a second by Alderman Garde. Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, there was an email sent out to the alderman stating some facts that as a 24-year member who was a softball umpire for 24 years and who visited Appleton, Manassia, and NINA for the places that I umpire, all combined in walks as well, I understood the daily operation. I was probably, worked right along with the former Park and Rec Director, Brian, to solve many issues that dealt with over those 24 years in Manassia, for sure. And it's interesting, so I provided the numbers there, and the amount of money that Eric from Fox Valley Association takes in for league fees of $114,000. And granted, he does pay officials and does pay for balls, and he does pay a slight stipend for Appleton for their use, $6,000. And he did get a increase from $525 to $840 for the Manassia use of their diamonds, which is a mere, you know, $300. In Appleton, a person who would like to use a diamond is charged $25 an hour. In Manassia, we're assigning him $35 per night. With four games, that works out to $9 per hour. So, I feel that $9 per hour is obviously a lot less than 25. I feel that that number could be increased. Now, he's making a decent amount of money by organizing these softball leagues, and Willie Beeman's at NINA, the Manassia, he uses Manassia for two nights. Appleton, he uses for like four nights. He's got 70-some teams that play in Appleton on various nights. The only time that he does use the full diamonds, he uses seven diamonds on a Thursday night, which is by far the busiest night in the valley for softball. He uses three diamonds on Sunday, five on Tuesday. He uses four on Wednesday during the summer, and then four in the fall for softball, and seven on Thursday night. With those $415 charges of those 71 teams that I just listed, he brings in $29,465. I couldn't find the umpire cost because, quite honestly, I did not do my homework and get to a softball game this summer to find out if he pays the umpire behind the plate and also a base umpire. Lot of times, in these leagues right now, they will have the opposing team have the base umpire provided by the opposing team, so he only has one official to pay. So, that cost is kind of up in the air. You know, I look at that, whether we charge more than $9 an hour for him. Also, Megan has done a wonderful job. She was given an increase in October for her hard work, and then she was given, all city employees were given a 4% pay raise in January. And she's highly qualified to do this job, and she's, would do an outstanding job. And I guess I appreciate the Park and Rec service. I am 24, like I said, 24 years as an umpire. I'm just wondering how many of the board members have attended a game at Jefferson Park in the last 20 years, they've ever been out to the softball diamonds to see it in action? Maybe one of you? And I know Alderman Garde did play softball, so he was out there for many years. But that'd be, it's kind of like me making decisions on the WIR racetrack. I've never been there, but yet I'm on the Board of Directors to direct racing. I've never been there, but maybe some of the people on the Park and Rec Board have never been to a softball diamond either, or a game, yet they're given the opportunity to make the decision in what goes on. It's a little disappointing, disheartening. You know, if Megan is overworked, and we find out that $840 is what we are kind of taking in from the Fox Valley Association for Fox Valley Athletics for softball, are there any other programs that, because of the Lawson Canal, because of the different programs that Mr. Sturm had listed that Megan is responsible for, will have partake, are there any other city programs that we are going to sub out? Camp Champs, could we sub that out to somebody? Could the street department sub out garbage? We've discussed that many times.
We're on softball this evening.
Yes, but I'm still on a roll here. So, I guess I'm leading that we either increase the money that we're charging Eric from Fox Valley Athletics to a different number, or we decide and have Megan, who I think would do an outstanding job, running the softball program for us. So, that's my take on this. Thank you.
Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to be very clear here that there was never any question whether we felt that the agreement that you entered into with this particular party was not qualified. That's never been the case. As far as handling this issue in-house, if you recall, when the Park Board wanted the new diamond, I was on the fence. And I asked Megan, our Parks Director, if she felt that if this individual left, would she be willing to step forward and handle this, or if she felt she could? And she answered yes. A second meeting, I asked her, would she feel comfortable at all doing this? And she said yes. And Randy did allude to, although I think it has really nothing to do with it, but this is a very well-paid position. We pay these people these very high salaries that had two salary increases. We pay these people these very high salaries that had two salary increases to do these jobs. And I do understand that if you farm it out, you're gonna free up her time to do things that might be more important. Eli had mentioned three years. I think really the ball diamond should be ready within two years, correct? At the end of this year, we're supposed to be building the new diamond.
We would anticipate construction probably after the 2024 season, so they'd be ready for the 2025 season. So, the thought with this agreement was that you would have two years under the current field that we currently have, and then one year underneath a new field where we would understand operations and operating costs.
Okay. Then, in to some degree, then Eli is correct on that. I think the concerns of Alderman Repella bringing this forward to the council was not in a manner of secrecy of any sort or anything. There's nobody in this room that's more qualified on this topic than Randy. And he just wanted to share with everybody his opinion about this, and maybe he didn't go about the right way. I've talked to him about that. I know the mayor has, and we've corrected that situation. The issue that I always have is here's a business. We build this ball diamond, or we provide this service to a business that runs a business at the taxpayer's expense. That has always bothered me. I mean, I've used this analysis before. I have a business that could certainly use a building, and I wouldn't mind using maybe 800 square feet out at the city garage. Is that okay? I don't find that to be okay. I find that very inappropriate. This guy's running a... We're spending literally hundreds of thousands of dollars, not just for a new diamond in the future, but we spent those kinds of dollars for these diamonds. Not only that, but we maintain it. So, we're cutting the grass. We're maintaining the diamond itself, and I just have a very uncomfortable level about that. That part bothers me. I'm sure there are other situations. We had one before. The mayor sent out an email to everybody about the kayak situation, and he and I differ on that issue. And that is, again, we provided a building for someone to run a business out of, and the amount of money that they were paying was so minimal, it was ridiculous. And all we did is ask that maybe they step forward so that it wasn't completely subsidized by the taxpayer, and they left. That was fine with me. So... So, here's the, maybe the third part of this that bothers me. Explain to me why Appleton is better than Manassia when we are able to lease out this diamond for his business? Yes, he might have more events. That actually works in his favor. To me, if you want to talk about apples to apples, then let's do apples to apples. You know, if it's $25 an hour, then why aren't we doing it for $25 an hour? If it's $35 a night instead of the $25 an hour, I don't find that to be fair. So, I know that, I believe it came from Mr. Stern's email about decisions being made, and if we're not happy with that, that maybe we send it back to the Park Board. I'd almost like to do that. I'd like for this to be renegotiated because I'm not happy with what's here now. I feel that we should be doing a better job. Either that or just have a one-year agreement for now. So, I'm gonna leave it at that. I'm not voting for this. I'm not happy with the dollar amount. It should be the same as what he's charging his other customers. I think it's unfair that we're being charged something less because it's here. That's insulting.
Dr. Sackett, did you want to comment on the fees in comparison?
Yes, if I can speak to that a little bit. So, when referring to the $25 that was noted by Alderman Repella per hour in the city of Appleton versus the long-term agreement that Fox Valley Athletics has with the city of Appleton, those are two different things. So, looking at the $25 per hour, it would probably be an individual business maybe coming in and running, say, a charity game or something like that. That is very different than the long-term agreement that Fox Valley has entered in and has had agreements in the past with the city of Appleton. So, those are two different things. So, if you would look at the current agreement, so right now, it's estimated that Fox Valley Athletics is gonna use just for the summer season. And may I note that the current agreement with Fox Valley Athletics in the summer and the city of Appleton covers the summer season, and they host a fall season, which we do not. So, if we just look at the summer season, it's 21 fields over the course of a week for approximately 12 weeks is what you would estimate a season to be at, and it's a $6,000 agreement. So, roughly, it's $23.81 a night. Not an hour, but per night. Where our agreement would be two fields a week. We have one diamond on Thursday nights and one diamond on Sunday nights for the course of the 12 weeks at $840, comes to $35 a night. So, we're priced approximately a little over $10 more per night. And the agreement with the city of Appleton also includes the use of the concession stand included in that $6,000 agreement as well.
That's where he's making his money.
Right. And that is not included in our agreement. So, should we include that in our development of Jefferson Park, and he wants to use that? That's not included in this agreement, and that's one reason I left it at a three-year agreement, so that we can go back and revisit that and potentially extend that and renegotiate those terms.
So, you're saying that this new diamond won't be built until 2025?
No, it'll be built at the end of 2024 and ready to use in 2025. We'll be going through engineering design this year, ready to construct to limit the interruptions in the park and the interruptions of that season. We would look to develop it after the 2024 season.
And did that include the concession area?
You mean the...
Hours?
Our agreement?
No.
Or just the construction?
Yeah.
We would hope to have, yes, all of that constructed and ready to go. But again, this agreement that you would enter in with Fox Valley Athletics does not use that. So, even if the concession stand is ready to go in 2025, we would have to come back to the table if he would come to us and say, "I would like to use that," because this current agreement does not include that.
Is there no concession going on now?
Correct. There's no concessions. They could walk over to the pool concession during those hours if they wanted to purchase anything. I've also seen some at Brew's on Bago will stop by. I've seen softball players there. But currently, there are no concessions because there's no concession facility.
So, everyone's just bringing in their supplies?
Well, they have to get a beer beverage permit. So, that is reminded to Eric from Fox Valley Athletics that if any of the teams want to drink in Jefferson Park, that they need to purchase the beer beverage permit. So, that is reminded to them every season, which per our rules and regulations for the park is the proper procedure.
So, are you telling me then that the numbers that Alderman Repella provided were incorrect?
I'm not saying they're incorrect. I'm saying they're two different things. There's the long-term agreement with Fox Valley Athletics versus the $25 an hour, which would be a one-time usage fee. So, very common in separation of long-term agreements versus one-time usage. Again, it would be a potential business coming in and renting the field for, maybe they want to have a game for their business, their party or something like that, or they want to have a charity game. That's a one-time usage fee.
And that's the $25 an hour?
That would be my understanding for that. Correct. That's typically different with that. And because you're not blocking out whole nights like Fox Valley Athletics is doing, that's why you're doing like a per-hour fee. And we are prepping the diamond one time per night. So, to charge a per-hour fee, we're not going in and re-prepping after every game. Even if he is hosting four games a night, we're only prepping one time a night. So, to charge regularly would be above and beyond, I'd say, what would be necessary because we're looking to cover our costs, which is achieved through this.
Well, we're definitely not recovering our costs. And Mr. Stern made that clear. That's not what we provide our park services for, is to make... And I'm at no point looking at...
Not recovering maybe the facility costs, but as far as looking at, you know, maybe operational costs, the cost of the staff to go out and prep that diamond, that's what this is looking to cover. You're right, not facility costs as a whole. That's not what we provide.
No, I realize that, but I don't even think the $35 covers the cost of the involvement of the city's efforts out there from cutting the grass to maintaining the field and doing it once a night and all those kind of things. There's just no way. I've seen the salaries around here. There's no way.
But when recently reviewing, we looked at that. It takes us about a half hour to prepare a diamond. So, you're looking at the staff costs, and a lot of times, even if you look at it from a full-time, year-round parks person, and you would use that fee versus at times, we'll have seasonal staff out there, which is approximately probably half of what we would pay. You know, so you're saving money there. You have, you know, you're not gonna charge for uses of rakes and things like that, so that's just standard equipment. So, there's really minimal time spent out there. It doesn't take long to prep a diamond.
The only thing that would make me want to vote for this is just the fact that it's cheaper for the city, period. Because I don't believe our costs are covered with the $35. I also don't believe that the time that Megan puts into this with the salary she makes picks up the cost, plus the maintenance of that park and everything else. So, I'll struggle here for a little bit. I want to, I see some other lights on. They might have their opinion, but again, the thing that irks me probably the most is here's a business that's benefiting off the taxpayers.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Director Sackett, for explaining some of the numbers to some of the Aldermen that just don't have their facts correct. There's a lot of numbers here. We're throwing out numbers for the last, I don't know, couple months now, everything ever since the Vision Plan. Some guy's throwing out some numbers, and everybody's biting on it, grabbing the hook and saying, "Oh, my God, the world's coming to an end. Why are we doing this?" First of all, we sat down with Thad, Public Works, $35, thought it was a little low. But no, it's not. We're recouping our costs, and there's no way I want to put this burden on Megan and her staff when there's bigger fish to fry, as Sandra DeBille talks about with all these other major concerns with the city of Manassia. But let's spend, what is this, 15, 20 minutes now on an $840 a year fee? Because I got some numbers, and I used to be an umpire. Well, good. We increased their rate from 525 to 840, 60% in one year. What other programs, Megan, have you raised 60% in your activity guide? None.
None.
Not even close. I understand he was probably getting a good deal back then, but my gosh, this guy steps up, brings teams in here, does a respectable job, and he's still playing on an unsafe diamond for two more years, and he still wants to do it. And it isn't costing us anything. Little prep time for a little bit. So, I just want to put, that's my point. But just put this to bed, and we'll listen to the other two Aldermen to have their lights on, and we gotta move on tonight.
Alderman Hammond?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start by thanking Director Sackett for explaining the numbers a little bit. I feel as though I was misled by the numbers that were presented previously. So, I appreciate the re-explanation of what that looks like. And with that being said, I just want to thank all the folks in the room here for the conversation on this, and I want to thank the members of the Park and Rec Board for your due diligence. And I don't want the notion to ever be that folks that are on boards, whether advisory or whatever the capacity is, are less than for bringing recommendations to the council because they're doing that on their free time to give back to their community and something that they're passionate about, that they care about, that they do a lot of explicit research and investigating into. So, I just want it to be known that your efforts don't go unnoticed, and it's appreciated. You know, I kind of share the same sentiment to the Aldermen to my left here with private entities coming into a community, making profit off of it. But that being said, it's a two-way street. We want folks to come into our city to enjoy our city in different capacities. Those people that drive in here to participate, they're probably gonna stop at places in our community to grab a drink afterwards, go out for a meal, maybe fill up their car while they're in town, those different things. So, I struggle with it on twofold, but it's the society we live in. I want to hold private individuals accountable, and I don't like businesses profiting off of government, but that's also kind of the status quo. And it's no disrespect to this particular individual. He's probably a phenomenal person. I personally have never met him, so I'm not gonna make any statements one way or the other. And then one more point that I would like to make is just because, and I agree, you are remarkable, highly qualified. I think you could do a phenomenal job running this, but we have so much already to do that we could be doing in the city that I don't know that that's the best use of our time right now. And maybe in the future, that would be a great use of our time, but this gives us a few years to kind of keep moving forward with the Jefferson Park Plan, starting to do some building. And if this individual's paying a fair wage, or excuse me, a fair amount to utilize our space and to run this program, I don't see an issue with it. With that all being said, I'll yield.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I really see this as a pretty simple arrangement. The Fox Valley Athletics is paying the city to use the diamond, and the city recovers the cost of preparing that diamond for games. In the memorandum of understanding, the city has four responsibilities, four. Fox Valley Athletics has nine. I will review them. The four responsibilities of this city. One is to assist with the distribution of team registration and other program information to prospective teams. Doesn't cost us a lot of time or money. The next three are things that we already do. Maintain all fields, including all support amenities such as restrooms, scoreboards, bleachers, bays, chalk field, drying material, et cetera. Provide all electrical utilities to the fields and manage any rentals or use of the fields by non-program users. That's it. Most of those are, all of those are things that we already do. Fox Valley Athletics, on the other hand, has nine responsibilities in this agreement. They establish the program, including the leagues in the program, the number of teams in each league, the length of season, the schedules, and makeup schedules. They do all of that. They provide the marketing of the program through their website and social media. All of that costs them money. They recruit, hire, and train, and schedule, and oversee all the staff, which means they're paying the umpires. They're paying all of the people that they need to run the team and the program on the field. Recruitment costs money as well. And they develop and distribute the team registration. They oversee and manage all the day-to-day duties. And a bunch of those things are outlined there. They communicate any field issues to the Park and Recs Department. They'll provide an annual report to the Park and Recs Director. They're also required to carry insurance, which includes comprehensive general liability, workers' compensation, and umbrella. All of that costs them money in addition to the fee that they pay the city to use the field. So, yes, they are a business. The business's goal is to turn a profit. It's also costing them a substantial amount of money to do business here. And I think, you know, they feel strongly that they can build a softball program in Manassia, and I say, "Let them do it." And they'll provide us their annual report at the end of the year. Let's support this, and I agree, it's time to move on. Thank you.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you. One thing that we're forgetting, Megan did not include the light costs. And so, for the $35...
And so for the $35 that we're being, we're charging him per night, that included the oil marking the lines, cutting the grass, use of the scoreboard for that electricity, but also the light. So that one cost, Meghan, was that, that was not included in your $35, correct?
It was directly included. It's estimated at about $5 an hour. Currently, we also have lights over at Coslo Park, which we do not have an additional fee to the users at Coslo Park that use those lights. So when trying to keep consistency, I did not include that separately. Again, $35 was an estimated cost. When it comes to cutting the lawn on the ball diamond, we would do that regularly. We wouldn't do that only if we have ballgames happening there. We would cut grass anyways there. So when specifically looking at that $35 fee, I'm looking at the staff time cover, to need to cover the specific needs to prep that diamond for that game, not outside things.
Thank you.
Alderman Savick?
I just want to make clear that I don't buy the argument, Ted, about the past charges. My feeling is we didn't charge them enough back then. And so I think you understand my point. And then also too, a lot of conversation tonight that it's not worth our time to have Meghan do this work and have our department head and be involved. But we just passed an ordinance that I argued that same point. And that was now the police have to be involved, the community development had to be involved, and the Health Department had to be involved. So I just want to make that clear. And you know what ordinance that was. So anyways, I would, I would like to ask, how would you feel if we just entered into a one-year agreement until we start to have the new ball diamond? Because that's a huge expense. Do you feel he'll be like, oh, I don't want a one-year agreement? Or, I mean, you guys said you were in negotiations, so...
Correct. In my conversations, he's looking for a long-term commitment. Three years, what I, you know, and we had talked between three and five years. I felt three years, like I said, would get us through this construction, help us look at future operational costs. I don't think a one-year agreement behooves us in any way. We would be back to the same conversation next year. And I don't think anything would change in this conversation. So having just a one-term agreement...
Did you offer a five-year agreement?
That was originally what was asked of us, and I went to a three-year agreement.
Okay. Because if you recall, when we talked about the ball diamonds, my concern was we built the ball diamonds and then this guy pulls the rug out. So I guess I would feel more comfortable with a three-year agreement, knowing that he'll be around. So that's my...
Correct. He's not looking to leave.
I'm defeating my own argument here for the one year.
Yeah, he's making his investment too. I mean, there's, as, you know, Alderman Nichols talked about all the time and effort that he puts into it. This is considerable time and investment for him as well to enter into this agreement and do this work to help build our program back up to where it could be.
Well, after listening to the conversation, I will vote for this. But I will say that it is a vote that I'm not happy with. I feel that, again, a business has taken advantage of our community. I don't think he's trying to take advantage of our community personally, but just that, you know, taxpayers get a little upset when, when people subsidize everything for them and then they profit from it. And I've always had some issues with that. I don't get handouts. Other people don't get handouts. And it seems like some people thrive on this. But I will vote for this. I would, would have preferred a higher amount. I just think the $35 is chicken feed.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven, one.
Do we have a motion for item five? Alderman Grady?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion for the Marina Harbor Master Agreement for the year 2023 through 2024, the navigational seasons.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion, a second, from Alderman Schmidt. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of February 17th through March 2nd in the amount of $3,902,117.96.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion, a second, by Alderman Grady. Any discussion? Alderman Savick?
Seeing that our Parks Director is here today, I had called Jennifer about a number of subscriptions with Hulu and why there were so many. Did you have an answer for that?
I was gonna say, we don't have any subscriptions.
What did I say? Parks? I'm sorry, library, I'm sorry. Yep. Had parks on my mind. Let's get rid of that. Thanks, Brian.
Is it, okay. So I got the information kind of secondhand from, I believe you communicated with Jennifer, and one of my managers passed it on to me. So just, but yes, we have multiple Hulu accounts per their terms of service. We can't give out the access to multiple accounts to multiple people. So what we do is, we have a number of devices that the library circulates called Rokus. They provide our patrons with access to movies. It's also a way for them to test out services before they choose to purchase them for themselves. But we have a number of those devices, and those accounts go to basically add content to each of those devices.
Okay. I was just curious why we wouldn't pay just one fee and why it would have to be. I know what you're saying, you have multiple devices, but that shouldn't be. I mean, I have multiple devices and I don't have to pay separate fees for different services that I have.
But those devices are going out to different people, so we can't put that onto one account. So...
So the Director is saying you could go and rent one of those Hulu devices, a Roku, and bring it home with you for a week or two? I don't know how long you rent them out.
I believe it's two weeks for those.
Then next week, Alderman Hammond could rent that device out.
Oh, I didn't realize that's how we were doing that.
Correct.
I thought it was for, for in-house.
No, nope. Those actually get checked out to our patrons.
Wow, that's a pretty nice deal. Okay.
Next week, we know where Stan's going to get his Hulu.
I'm a little too busy. Sure, all of a sudden, you're going to have 50 of them.
Any other discuss, questions or discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item two is a liquor license application. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Reading from the memo in our packet, move to approve the Class A and Class A liquor license for Family Dollar Stores of Wisconsin LLC, doing business as Family Dollar, for the premises located at 714 Appleton Road for the remainder of the 2022 through 23 licensing year.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Tom Grady. Discussion?
I do.
Alderman Savick?
Thank you. I guess this is for the city clerk. I always thought that there had to be some kind of Manassia connection when it came to issuing this type of license. And let me get to it. Other than having the store there, I thought the, when I look at the individuals, they're either all out of state except for one in Ripon.
No, they, the, the members listed on the application do not have to have a connection to Manassia. They are a...
What am I thinking of then? There was, there was a time where you had to be a resident of the city of Manassia.
Yeah, nothing that I'm thinking of regarding liquor licensing.
Or, or, okay.
And all the members do go through a background check as well, and they did all pass.
I'll, I'll do my own research on that. I do realize that that wasn't the case, but I believe it was the case.
It seems like at one point, the registered agents needed to run the city, but it hasn't been a while.
They're all out of Virginia or something, so, okay.
Alderman Eisenach?
I would like to abstain from voting since I hold a liquor license, please.
It's a different kind of liquor license, though, than what you have.
So I can vote then?
You can do whatever you want.
Oh, then I'll vote.
If you want to abstain, you can abstain. That's fine.
Okay, I'll abstain, just to keep it simple.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven, zero. Alderman Eisenach abstaining.
Item number three is a amendment to a development agreement. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the third amendment to the development agreement by and between the city of Manassia and DH 130 Main LLC.
So motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Do you have discussion, Alderman Nichols?
Yes, I would just like Director Schrader to explain for folks listening what this is about.
Certainly. Thank you for the opportunity. So DH 130 Main in this development agreement is in regards to the upcoming harbor lofts located at 130 Main Street downtown, next to Parker Johns, in the old Anchor Bank Building. So that project is certainly coming along very well. It is actually, the, the apartment complexes are pre-leasing out online. So if you know anybody that's looking for a high-quality apartment, have them check that out, as well as they are working diligently to try and lock in some tenants on the first floor. Business growth is certainly hard in any market right now, so they are working diligently that. But in the meantime, they are, again, pressed against that deadline and just looking to push that back. We do have April 15th here to provide some, some additional buffer there because they do believe that they will still be done by April 1st, but it is going to be pretty tight. And again, this is just supply labor shortages and just trying to make sure they have a high-quality product at the end of this.
And everyone is confident that April 15th is enough time?
The developer's here, and I can't see him. Is he shaking?
He is.
All right, sounds good, we're good.
Thank you. I just so want to see us here again on April 15th going, okay, we need another month. So thank you so much.
Alderman Savick?
When it comes to these developments, 15 days is nothing compared to 15 months with other projects. So I've actually am impressed with the fact, I think most of us had an opportunity to tour the facility at different times. And I'm very impressed, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm, I'm very impressed with the fact that they were able to accomplish what they did in the timeline they had.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. We have two here this evening. Resolutions, did I skip something? Oh, no, I did, I did do, on number four, did I? Item four is an extension amendment to the MOA for Bird Rides Incorporated. Do we have a motion? No one wants to make a motion? Alderman Savick?
I'll move for the extension of the amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the city of Manassia and Bird Ride Inc.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion, a second. Anyone want to discuss? Alderman Hammond?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Schrader, I was just wondering if you could talk to this to some extent? Just, I'm kind of looking briefly at misuse of things that had happened with the Bird scooters over the period of time that we had them. So maybe explanation of exceeding, extending, excuse me, this agreement? And from your best viewpoint, do you think there's any ADA compliance issues with Bird scooters in the city when they're misused? And the reason I bring that forward as a constituent in my district has had discussions with me at great extent, and I want to do the due diligence of bringing that conversation to the forefront here when we're discussing extending these scooters further. I'm impressed with them. It seems like folks utilize them an awful lot, and they're really great on cutting down on their carbon footprint. But that is a concern that's been brought forward to me, so I was wondering if you could speak to that.
So the, I guess the parking of these facilities, these are undocked facilities, has probably been the, the most discussed topic. We do have, again, we do put out educational items that show up on the app. We do have a very good relationship with Bird. They have an open ticket line that if there is a complaint, it is followed up accordingly. Certainly, I think we can have these same arguments with, with anything that we do. Snow removal, for an example, certainly not ADA compliant in that, I think that goes to, you know, again, the scope of what we're trying to provide. The community here with allowing this memorandum of understanding is that, that micro mobility and does that outweigh the few that can't follow the rules or leave their scooter laying down? So again, I think putting that message out there, those reminders, I know personally, I've, you know, I've seen a scooter laying across the sidewalk. I've stopped my vehicle, I've got out, I've, I picked it back up, just because I want my community to look good as well. I did the same thing last week when there was a garbage can in the street, you know, because the wind blew it over. Same difference, you know, that garbage can was in the middle of the street, could have caused a hazard, pulled my vehicle over, got out, put it up. So again, I think there's just that, that, those common educational things that we're going to have to continue to do. But I think that's with anything. And I do believe Bird Scooters has put out a good effort initially here within this first pilot year to improve on those. And I hope as they continue, they will continue to do that as well.
Awesome. Thank you, Director Schrader. And with that, I just want to say I've been wrestling with this a little bit, just because of those complaints that have been brought forward to me. I want our community to be accessible for everybody, to be able to enjoy our sidewalks, to go for a walk, walk their dog if you're in a wheelchair, but also to get around on scooters. Kind of the same sentiment that we had discussions of earlier, private entity coming into a community and benefiting fiscally from it. But that's just the fact of the matter of how our world operates. It's a two-way street. And I think these scooters do give folks an opportunity to enjoy and experience your city in a different capacity of mobility to get around. And I do like the carbon footprint reduction by folks using the scooters rather than driving and other things of that nature. It's my sincere hope that Bird Scooter keeps being accountable to constituents here in the community when complaints come up, that they do their due diligence, can't talk, for trying to minimize any ADA issues so folks can all on an equal playing field get around our community. So I will be voting in favor of this, but I just felt that I needed to put this forward, so thank you.
Alderman Eisenach?
I wanted to point out that I've had quite a few people reach out to me in my district that were not in favor of the Bird scooters. And normally, I try to vote how my constituents feel. I'm going to vote opposite. I'm going to vote yes to renewing it, but only for the fact that we've only had one year of a contract. And I'd like to see if we have improvements in the next year. So that's why I'm differing from what my constituents want. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please. I don't know why it popped up first, but good thing it was unanimous.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Okay, now on to ordinances and resolutions. Do we have a motion for resolution number seven? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve resolution 723...
Do we have a motion for resolution number seven? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve resolution 723, a resolution regarding and authorizing the borrowing of $1,016,335 from Covantage Credit Union, providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation promissory note therefore, and levying a tax in connection therewith, introduced by Mayor Merkis.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion, a second, by Alderman Grady. Is there discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Sasseman, could you just review, for those folks listening, how this is a follow-up from our last meeting?
Yep.
What this borrowing is for, and how it will be paid back?
Sure. So at our previous council meeting, council approved two resolutions, authorizing the financing and accepting the quote from Covantage, and this is for two development projects, the first addition to Lake Park Heights and Woodland Lake cottages. So these resolutions now authorize the actual borrowing for both of those projects. The payment schedules are set up to basically mirror the revenues that the city should be getting annually. So although it's, you know, references that we are, that we would be borrowing for it, we, we shouldn't be, because it will match those dollar amounts.
Those dollar amounts come from where?
The lot sales.
From the lot sales, from the developer.
Correct.
So the developer pays the money from the lot sales to pay this, these loans.
Right. Yep. Thank you. And each of the borrowings has its own resolution and promissory note.
Seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, then, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Do we have a motion for resolution eight? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve resolution eight, 23, a resolution regarding and authorizing the borrowing of $3,651,000 from Covantage Credit Union, providing for the issuance and sale of a general obligation promissory note therefore, and levying a tax in connection therewith as introduced by Mayor Merkis.
Is there, is a motion, a second? Any further discussion? Alderman Savinak?
So Jennifer, I noticed that the payout schedule to 2033, the last payment, is always like four or five times the size. Is that just because we feel, or it could be Sam, we feel that maybe by that time, it would take that long for the sale of these lots? And if, if so, if, let's say, the economy changes and things change, are we able to pay this off early and refinance?
Yes. Both of them can be paid early. The one for the 3.6 million, that is the term of the development agreement, but what Covantage did for us is they amortized it over 15 years to make the principal and interest payments match the revenues that we would get in. That's why you would be seeing the balloon payment at the end of the 10 years. However, the development agreement is to wrap up in 10 years.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
I see that they were advertising their pool is complete today. It's a very appropriate day for an outdoor pool to be completed. I chuckled when I saw that, as it was snowing like crazy. Item N is public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment this evening?
I'd like to say thank you for supporting the two items before you for Park and Rec, and at the board level, committee level, sometimes decisions are not easy, and often they're not perfect, so we always shoot for the best. And I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sandra DeBille Taylor, 545 Broad Street. Just a few comments regarding the agreement for the rental of Jefferson Park for softball. I want to echo a lot of the comments Alderman Savinak stated, primarily that of the fact that we're having for-profit companies, and this goes for Scooter, too, coming into our community, using our facilities for their benefit. And yet, the little bit we're having, my concern with this is the floodgates that it will open, as Alderman Savinak referred to with the former kayak at the Marina that dissolved. But I wouldn't be surprised if someone didn't try to do that again at Jefferson, or someone wants to build a bait, have the city build a bait shop, so they can sell bait at Jefferson or one of our other parks, or, you know, concessions. All these things, we're having for-profit companies, and that's the part of their doing business, is the marketing and things that you were referring to, and advertising. It opens a can of worms. This is public land, it's owned by the taxpayers. It's not there to be subletted out for someone else to make a buck. And that's my biggest concern, is where it will lead. But I thank Alderman Savinak for all of his questions, because he nailed it on the head. And as Nina, if it's so much work, they no longer do a softball program. So that could have been another option, too. We just won't do it. I will leave it at that. There was a few other things I was gonna mention, but please remember, this is our property, this isn't someone else's. Thank you.
I could see you wanted to.
Joan, I just want to say thank you for the support. As for the can of worms of public land being used for businesses, I don't hear the argument made for Uber or Lyft using our public roads for these things. I don't hear, no one's coming with torches and pitchforks at farmers markets or anything like that. The can of worms is already open and has been open for years. Now it's just, how do we management, manage it from there? So, just to offer a counterargument to that. But again, thank you for everything.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, if we could have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
So motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Please stand adjourned. Thank you.
The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the city of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www.cityofmanassia-wy.gov. To express opinions about city of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.